On Tuesday, May 26, 2020, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Howell.
So, here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Here.
And Aquino.
Here, and if you're able to, could you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag. Okay, do we have any agenda updates?
You have no agenda updates this evening.
Okay, do we have anybody who would like to speak from business from the floor?
You have no speakers under business from the floor.
Okay, then would you call our first item, please?
Okay, your first item this evening is scheduled presentation, item number one. Finance Director Stacy Tumani will make a presentation, and for those of you following along, the PowerPoint begins on page 43.
Okay, good evening, members of the council. This is Stacy Tumani, Finance Director, and tonight I'll be presenting the financial results for the third quarter of fiscal year 1920. And much of this information was presented to you at your May 12 meeting during introduction to the proposed budget, so this will be a fairly brief recap. But as the clerk mentioned, the slides are included in your packet, and we will begin on page 43, on the introduction page. And if we flip to page 44, start off with a summary of how the general fund is projected to end the year in comparison to your adopted budget. We're projecting total revenues of about $86 million and total expenditures of about $94.5 million. When we take into account the transit annexation, the projected change in the unassigned fund balance is about $5.5 million, taking the general fund from $17.4 million unassigned fund balance at the end of fiscal year 19 to $11.8 million, or about 12.5% as a percentage of expenditures. And so those were the numbers that we brought to you last time, and we are still expecting the same projection as of today. We can move forward to slide three, which is page 45. And here you have the unassigned fund balance displayed in this graph form, and you're seeing that sharp drop as we go from fiscal year 19 down to the end of fiscal year 20, so from the $17.4 million down to $11.8 million by the end of the fiscal year. Can move forward to page 46, taking a look at the major revenue sources in the general fund. Property taxes continue to be expected to come in at budget for fiscal year 20. We've left them at $27.9 million for our projection. Sales taxes are projected to end the year at $23.9 million, a shortfall of about $2.5 million from budget, or about a 9.3% decrease. Charges for services are projected to end the year at about $11.7 million, a $2.7 million shortfall from budgeted amount. And as we've mentioned before, this is primarily due to all of the recreation facilities being closed, such as the aquatic center, sports complex, and the zoo, and also due to the cancellation of community center reservations and cancellation and refund of all the recreation programming and classes. They're all included in that line item. As we move down to the licenses, permits, and VLF, that combined amount is expected to come in over budget by about $1 million, and that's mostly due to development activity that was going really strong before the health crisis began, so that's projected to come in right there at about $10.9 million. For transfers in and other revenue, they're projected to be fairly close to the budgeted amount. And so in total, the impacts to these revenue sources have created a projected $5.8 million loss in revenue through June 30th of 2020. We'll move forward to page 47. And this just looks at the revenues in a little bit different way. You have your tax-related revenues at the top. Combined, they're expected to come in at about $54.9 million, the $3.3 million or 5.7% shortfall from budget. And then the next line down, the other bolded one for the all non-tax revenue, projected to come in at a combined $31.1 million, and that's about a $2.5 million or 7.3% shortfall from budget. I detailed out a few of the other categories in the non-tax revenue, that you can see the impact that they're having on our total revenues. Development fees are projected to come in just under budget at $2.6 million. Building permits will be over budget by about $700,000, coming in at a projected $2 million. Parks and rec fees are taking the big loss due to the closure of the facilities and programs, and projected to end the year at about $2.9 million, but the $2.3 million shortfall from budget. And we expect ambulance fees to come in over budget by about $265,000 this year, so total revenues of about $86 million. Can move forward to slide, or page 48. And here we have the projections for where we expect expenditures to end the year in each of these categories. In total, we're projecting that will be just under budget by about $245,000, and this is due to those immediate cost-saving measures that were implemented in order to lessen the impact that this emergency will have on the unassigned fund balance this year. As a reminder, those savings came from reduced expenditures for the parks and recreation programs that were canceled due to the closure of facilities. We also had lower levels of operation and maintenance costs citywide as we just pulled back. The biggest impact is in salary savings from the reduction in our temporary employee costs, and we've also eliminated as much as possible all non-essential expenditures in all departments. And additionally, we have the hiring freeze into effect, and so all vacant, non-critical positions continue to remain vacant at this time, and so we're realizing salary and benefit savings for those vacant positions. Move forward to page 49. This slide shows the projected expenditures by general fund departments. Most departments are expected to end the year under budget, just have a few that are slightly over budget. The city manager and city clerk's departments have slight increases due to some increased contracts, staffing costs, and supplies. Overtime in the fire department was due to employees being out on leave, and so that led to some budget overages for the fire department. And in community development, they're over budget, mostly due to contract costs for the Folsom Plan area, but those are almost all recouped through revenues for those services. So all of this creates a general fund expenditure amount of about 91.6 million, or 99.7% of the budget, which is under budget in total. So we can skip forward two pages as we start looking at the enterprise funds and how they're projected to end the fiscal year. We'll be on page 51, starting with the water enterprise fund. So at the top, program revenues for the water fund are projected to end the fiscal year at $14.6 million, just over the budgeted amount by about $375,000. As we move down, the combination of all the other expenses, or non-capital expenses, are projected to end the year at about $11.8 million, under budget by about $2 million, and that's seen in contracts, O&M, and supplies that were budgeted at a higher amount but not expected to be needed during this fiscal year, so have some budget savings there. And capital expenses are lower than budget, and that's due to the timing of completing some of the projects during the year. And that leaves them with a working capital of $17.1 million, so this fund's looking pretty good at this point for their levels of working capital. We'll flip forward to page 52, wastewater enterprise fund. And it's a similar story here, program revenues coming in just above budget at $7.1 million, and the combined non-capital expenses are below budget by about $1 million, and again, that's due to some contractual services and employee costs that were not expected to be expended during this year. For capital expenses, the projection is about $708,000 this year, and that leaves us with a working capital amount of about $12.9 million. And so they're in good shape at this point, which is great as they prepare for the increased capital expenditures that are proposed for fiscal year 21. So there's just the timing of the capital expenses between the two years. We'll move forward to page 53, the solid waste enterprise fund. The solid waste program revenues are projected to end the year over budget at $11.7 million, and then the combined total expenses are projected to end the year under budget by about $600,000. And the under budget for the expenses is due to some vacancies during the year and some reduced contract costs, and so that does keep them from having a deficit. Operating revenues are projected to come in just slightly above expenditures. Capital expenses will be just over budget with the purchase of some solid waste vehicles, but with that capital investment, it does dip into working capital, and we're projecting it to end the year at about $4.97 million, and just barely meeting the minimum reserve requirements as determined by best practices for this fund. We'll move to our internal service fund section, and on page 55, we have a look at the risk management fund, and this is the fund that's used to account for the city's insurance program. On the top line, the charges for services, this is what we bring in from all the other departments and funds, and we had a planned decrease in revenue this year. You can see it's down just slightly from the actual number for fiscal year 1819. And this allowed us to keep insurance expenses in different departments stable, partially offset increases in purse expenses this year. The unrestricted net position, noted in blue, is strong in this fund with a projection of about $8.7 million at the end of the year, and having this in here allows you to minimize swings in the budget when health costs fluctuate. Some of the categories down at the bottom are listed out. We have the active employee health, and we were able to keep that relatively stable due to adding more plans. We have some very good rates, and we added that high deductible option. We've been able to keep it fairly flat year to year. Retiree health has remained stable. We didn't add a significant amount of retirees this year, so we're seeing it flat year to year also. Workers' comp is projected to be a fairly good year and be about in line with the prior year, and then liability insurance stayed right around where it was in the prior year. And that is the last slide that I have for this presentation, unless you have any questions or comments.
Any questions or comments, Chris Stacy?
My only comment would be, good job on the risk management account because everything's coming in under budget, so that's a good thing. For the expenses, good job.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Um, next item, please.
Your next item this evening is the consent calendar.
I'll move.
Anybody have anything?
I'll move consent. I'll move it unless there's a question.
Is there a question? Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Howell, a second by Councilmember Kozlowski. There are no questions, if you can call the roll, please.
Councilmember Howell.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yeah.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yeah.
And Aquino.
Yes. Next item, please.
Your next item is new business, item number six. This is resolution number 10459, a resolution authorizing the automatic extension of zoning-related entitlements and grading permits for one year. Community Development Director Pam Johns will be presenting this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Pam Johns, Community Development Director. Business report.
Are you there, Pam?
Mayor Aquino, this is your.
I'm not hearing anything anymore.
Mayor Aquino, this is City Manager Elaine Anderson. I'm going to go ahead and step in for Ms. Johns. We're not quite sure if there's been a technical difficulty, but the resolution before you, resolution 10459, is a resolution authorizing the automatic extension of zoning-related entitlements and grading permits. We have not seen much of a slowdown, frankly, no slowdown at all at our building and planning counter, but just the same because the processing approval and issuance of land use entitlements represent a substantial investment of money, time, and effort toward the successful completion of these projects. Expiration of these entitlements represents a significant loss for landowners, developers, and the local economy, and we're very mindful of that in this COVID emergency. So staff is recommending that the city council take action to prevent against potential loss and preserve development opportunities by granting an automatic extension of one year to the term of these entitlements that would otherwise expire in 2020 by adopting the resolution. So we recommend that you adopt resolution 10459, and happy to take any questions.
Okay, any questions for Elaine?
Do we need to have a public hearing for this one?
There is no public hearing for this one, Councilmember Kozlowski.
I will move resolution 10459 for approval.
And I'll second it.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and second, could you take the roll, please?
Councilmember Howell.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yeah.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yeah.
And Aquino.
Yep. And next item, please.
Okay, your next item this evening is public hearing, item number seven, related to community facilities, District Number 23. You have the resolutions that are set forth on the agenda along with an ordinance, and I'd just like to make one correction on the ordinance number. It is not 1010305, it's 1305. And presenting this evening again will be Finance Director Stacy Tumani, and for those of you following along, your PowerPoint presentation begins on page 569 of your staff report.
Okay, good evening again, Mayor and councilmembers. Stacy Tumani, Finance Director. Tonight's item is for CFD 23, Folsom Ranch, Community Facilities District Formation, and as the clerk mentioned, will begin on page 569, the introductory page. So the first slide on page 570, this is some background information on the CFD formation. The landowners in the Folsom Plan area have requested that the city form CFD 23. CFD 23 includes six different improvement areas designated as improvement areas number one through number six, and the formation of the CFD 23 is subject to the Melrose Act, which is Government Code Section 53311, and city policies regarding land secured financing districts. We'll go to page 571. Here's a chart with information on the proposed development within CFD 23. You have a mix of single-family and single-family high-density units, in addition to multifamily, low, medium, and high-density units, and some non-residential acreage, and so they're all mixed within these improvement areas. Page 572, here you have the map of the proposed boundaries of CFD 23. The CFD is included within the area bordered by White Rock Road to the south, Placerville Road to the east, Highway 50 to the north, and includes an area of parcels west of East Bidwell Street. We can go to page 573. And as some additional background information, at your April 14 meeting, you approved resolution number 10414, which appointed consultants, approved a proposed boundary map, declared the intention to form a CFD to be named City of Folsom Community Facilities District Number 23, and to levy special taxes, and you also approved resolution number 10415, declaring the necessity for incurring bonded indebtedness, and also for each improvement area, and called for a public hearing. Can go to page 574. The CFD is intended to provide funding for the public facilities financing plan, backbone infrastructure, and facilities, and also the project-specific maintenance services. The infrastructure and facilities to be financed are transportation improvements, water and recycled water system improvements, wastewater and drainage system improvements, park, parkway, and open space improvements, and payment of specific plan infrastructure fee program obligations. And the project-specific maintenance services include landscape corridor, enhanced open space, and streetlight maintenance, medians, entries and entry monumentation, neighborhood parks, community amenities, and stormwater management within this project area. We can go to page 575. And this slide goes over the financing plan and the structure of both the facility special tax and the services special tax. The facility special tax can be levied for 50 years, the year following the first building permit or debt issuance, will be no later than fiscal year 207980, that's a council discretion. The maximum facility special tax will be increased annually by 2%, and the special tax ranges from $2,900 on a low-density multifamily home to $3,886 on a low-density single-family home. The services special tax can be levied in perpetuity at city council discretion. The special tax will be increased annually by the annualized change in the CPI, and the special tax ranges from $85 to $210 for all residential units. We'll go to page 576. With these special taxes, the assessed parcels in the CFD will have a property tax that is within your policy of 2%, with ranges from 1.84% to 1.9% depending on the zoning. We'll go to page 577. Tonight, we're recommending that the city council conduct a public hearing, approve the resolution forming CFD Number 23, approve the resolution deeming it necessary to incur bonded indebtedness for each improvement area, approve the resolutions calling for a special mail ballot election for each improvement area, approve the resolutions declaring results of the special mail ballot election for each improvement area, and introduce and provide the first reading of the ordinance levying a special tax. As the clerk mentioned, the ordinance number needs to be corrected on this slide. It should be 1305. And that concludes my part of the presentation on this item tonight.
Okay, are there any questions for Stacy? Okay, doesn't sound like there are. So it is now in order for me to open the public hearing on the formation of the City of Folsom Community Facilities District Number 23 in Folsom Ranch, here after known as the district, the extent of such district, including the designation of six improvement areas within the district, each an improvement area, and collectively the improvement areas, the furnishing of specified types of public facilities and public services within the district, the proposed rate and method of apportionment of the special tax to be levied within each such improvement area, and the proposed incurrence of bonded indebtedness in connection with each improvement area. Madam clerk, has notice of this hearing been given in accordance with applicable law?
Yes, as required by the Melrose Community Facilities Act and by prior resolution of this council, notice of this hearing was published once in the Folsom Telegraph on May 14, 2020, and notice was mailed to the landowners within each improvement area on April 28, 2020.
Okay, the public hearing is now officially opened. We have had presentations from staff and consultants about the district and each improvement area. We will receive comments, questions, and protests from any interested persons. When all comments have been received, the public hearing will be closed. The floor is now open to testimony from members of the public. At this time, Madam clerk, are there any interested persons or potential special taxpayers who may wish to testify orally or in writing for or against the aforementioned items?
There are none.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Madam clerk, does a majority protest exist?
No written protests have been received from the landowners within any of the improvement areas, and therefore a majority protest does not exist.
Okay, at this time, because a majority protest does not exist...
Okay, at this time, because a majority protest does not exist, it is appropriate for the city council to consider resolutions to form the district, to designate the improvement areas, to declare the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness within each improvement area, and to call a special election with each improvement area. But at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 10435, which is a resolution to form CFD 23 and designate improvement areas.
So moved.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yeah.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolutions Number 10436 through 10441, which are resolutions of necessity to incur bonded indebtedness in improvement areas one through six.
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yeah.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolutions Number 10442 through 10447, which are resolutions calling for a special election.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yeah.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes. And pursuant to Resolutions Number 10442 through 10447, the elections for the incurring of the bonded indebtedness, the levy of the applicable special tax, and the establishment of the appropriations limit for each improvement area are now open, and the clerk may conduct the election. Madam Clerk, have you received the ballots from the landowners in each improvement area?
I have received the ballots and found that all ballots in the election have been submitted. We do declare the election closed.
Could the clerk proceed to canvas the ballots for each improvement area?
I've completed the canvas of the ballots for the special elections related to the improvement areas held on May 26, 2020. For each improvement area, all eligible votes were cast in support of the applicable measure, and zero votes were cast in opposition to such measure. Therefore, for each improvement area, the applicable measure was approved with a 100% vote in favor.
Okay, so at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolutions Number 10448 through 10453, which declare election results for improvement areas one through six.
So moved.
Okay, we've got a motion. Someone wants to say, I'll second, I'll second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yeah.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes. And finally, I will entertain a motion to introduce and have the first reading of ordinance Number 1305, an uncodified ordinance levying special taxes for the fiscal year 2020 to '21, and following fiscal years within CFD 23.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yeah.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes. Thank you for your help with that, Krista. You can go ahead and call the next item.
Okay, your next item this evening is Resolution Number 10458, a resolution determining that the Creekstone Phase 1 subdivision project is exempt from CEQA and improving a small-lot vesting tentative subdivision map, planned development permit, and the inclusionary housing plan for the Creekstone Phase 1 subdivision project. Presenting tonight will be Principal Planner Steve Banks. And for those of you following along, your PowerPoint presentation begins on page 977.
Thank you, Krista. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. Steve Banks with the Community Development Department. Krista mentioned, this project is for approval of a vesting tentative subdivision map, a planned development permit, a minor administrative modification for development of a 71-unit single-family residential subdivision within the Folsom Plan area. If we move to page number 978, this is a vicinity map, and in the blue rectangle, you see the location of the subdivision at the southeast corner of Mangini Parkway and East Bidwell Street. This is the, within the Mangini Ranch Phase 1 portion of the plan area. If we move on to page 979, this is an aerial photograph taken by a drone fairly recently. As you can see from the photograph, the site has been rough graded. It was down by Mangini Parkway to the north, East Bidwell Street to the west, with the Toll Brothers subdivision project beyond that. And then to the east, we have the Lenar subdivision, which is currently under construction, and to the south, there is a water detention facility. Moving on to page 980, as I noted earlier, this is a 71-unit subdivision on a little less than 10-acre site in the Folsom Plan area. Access to the site is being proposed, both streets and Mangini Parkway with two new driveways. This is not proposed to be a gated community, so the internal streets will be public streets. The applicant is proposing a number of minor modifications to the development standards to accommodate this division, and I'll touch on those a little bit later on in the presentation. We can move to page number 981, continuing on some of the key project details. There are three master plans being proposed. They're all two-story homes, and they range from a little over 1,800 square feet to 2,300 square feet, and there are three specific styles proposed with the three master plans. The applicant is proposing to transfer unutilized dwelling units from the site to two other locations within the Folsom Plan area, and as such, they are seeking approval of minor administrative modifications. And lastly, they have submitted, applicant submitted an inclusionary housing plan, and the applicant's intent is to pay an inclusionary in lieu fee into the city's housing trust fund to meet their inclusionary housing requirement. We can move on to page 982, and I'll direct your eyes to the right side of this slide. This is an illustrated graphic of the site plan. And you can see there's two streets within the subdivision, and you can see the access point at the south off East Bidwell Street, and the second access point to the northeast off Mangini Parkway. There are fairly substantial existing landscape buffers adjacent to the project site. In fact, there's a 30-foot wide landscape buffer on the outside of Mangini Parkway adjacent to the site, and a 25-foot wide landscape buffer along East Bidwell Street.
Steve, quick question?
Yeah.
I have a quick question. You're calling it two streets. It looks to me like it's one. It's really a circle. Does that have two street names?
It does have two street names, yes.
Why are we doing stuff like that? It's one street.
I would agree with that comment. We have a person in the department that does our street names in coordination with the emergency services, and this is what was agreed upon by emergency services with our staff member who created the street names. But I agree with their point. I would like to see, I would prefer one street name over two street names in a circumstance like this.
Right, and you know, can we, you know, try to have a future discussion about that? Because we've got weird situations all over town where street names change for no reason. Prairie City to Sibley, you know, the whole thing about East Bidwell and Scott Road. This is basically a circle, and even as far as the, the public safety stuff goes, as long as you know the address, you know where you're going. I just, I think it's very confusing for people that are visiting. So I'd like to have a future discussion about that and stop doing that.
We will look at that. I agree with your point.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Moving on to page 983, this is the subdivision map that was submitted by the applicant. As I mentioned, 71 residential lots are being created along the three landscape lots. Majority of the lots range from 3,000 to 3,500 square feet in size. Staff reviewed the map and determined that all of the subdivision map act the requirement. Moving on to page 984, as I noted, the applicant is also seeking approval of a planned development permit to deviate from the development standards established for this zoning district. Specifically, they're seeking to reduce the interior lot size and the corner lot sizes slightly, and also reduce a number of the setbacks. The applicant's rationale or justification for these reductions is they're really eager to provide a first-floor bedroom with this, with these subdivisions. In order to accommodate a first-floor bedroom, there's certain width and depth requirements needed to accomplish this. The applicant has also indicated that by placing the bedroom downstairs and towards the front of the residence, it also increased their ability to provide additional architectural details on the front of the building elevation. And lastly, the applicant noted that there are other subdivisions within the Folsom Plan area, and also north of Highway 50, that have similar development standards and have been successfully developed. If we move to page 985, this is simply a development standards table that shows the proposed standards on Row 2, the existing standards on Line 1, and a number of other subdivisions throughout the city that have similar standards. And in fact, I would say the Creekstone standards actually deviate quite a bit less than these other subdivisions. And so we do, it is, it's supposed to have a lesser impact in terms of some of its deviations. If we go to page 986, there were two traffic impact studies prepared for this project. The first study prepared in September 2019.
I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Sure.
It has to do with the garage setbacks. And this is not necessarily about this project, because this is fairly significant. I'm looking at, I'm looking at Meadows subdivision, Viscaya, and Farmhouse. Do they have HOAs that require that you park in the garage? Because if your front garage setback is only eight feet, you can't park a car in the driveway.
They do have HOAs with a long list of requirements relative to parking. And in terms of the design of those subdivisions you referenced, those are all high-court designs, so it's a little different design than what's being proposed with this subdivision. You are correct, those other subdivisions all have HOAs and a fairly consistent set of guidelines regarding parking in the garages.
Okay, because I know the standard parking space, not for contact, compact, but the standard parking space is 20 feet, and I think that's why we had 20 feet for a long time. So 18 feet could probably even fit my older, very large vehicle in that 18-foot driveway. But it's just, it's just something they need to, maybe even if we suggest that they include it in the disclosure to the homeowners.
Okay, that's a good point.
Okay, thank you.
Again, on page 986, as I noted, there were, there were two traffic studies prepared for this project. The first study simply wanted to make sure there were no new impacts that were previously identified in the 2011 EIR/ES, and the study did come to that conclusion, there were no new impacts that were identified. That being said, this project is subject to the mitigation impact fee relative to traffic, and those are included as conditions of approval for this project. A supplemental traffic study was done to look at access and circulation-related issues, and the study looked at two scenarios, an interim scenario, which assumed that the Toll Brothers project improvements had not been constructed yet, and then an ultimate scenario, which assumed the Toll Brothers project improvements had been constructed. If we move to page 987, this is simply a list of the two scenarios. If Toll Brothers move forward before this project, you can list improvements required for this project, it appears that, however, if the Toll Brothers project does not move forward with their improvements prior to this project, then there's a longer list of improvements that this project would be required to construct. And these are included as conditions of approval for this project. If we move to page 988, this is a graphic, and at the top graphic, and the shown in the red color are the improvements that would need to be constructed without the Toll Brothers project moving forward, and the bottom graphic shows the improvements that would be required with the Toll Brothers project moving forward, and you can see there's a substantial difference between the two graphics. Moving on to page 989, the next slide, a noise analysis was prepared for this project, and as you would expect, based on the expected traffic volumes on Mangini Parkway, six-foot-tall noise barriers are recommended along East Bidwell Street, showing in the graphic. If we move to page 990, this is a wall and fencing exhibit, and as I referenced, a sound wall will be present on East Bidwell Street and Mangini Parkway. There's an existing sound wall to the east where the Lenar subdivision is located, and then we have open space to the south of the project site, and so a combination of open fence and retaining walls will be located to the south boundary. Moving to page 991, as I mentioned, all the master plans are two-story homes with an attached two-car garage. City staff spent a lot of time with the applicant, working on softening design elements to soften the appearance of the two-story homes. There is not a single-story master planning included, and so we spent a great deal of time creating architectural details and single-story elements to soften the appearance of the homes as due on all four building elevations. And as I mentioned, there's three different California themes for the subdivision, Italian villa, Spanish colonial, and western farmhouse. Moving to page 992, the project is subject to the Folsom Ranch Central District Design Guidelines, and I just highlighted a few of the more important ones. Staff evaluated with this project, especially providing a greater list of detail on the rear building elevations, as this project is at East Bidwell Street and Mangini Parkway is very visible through a lot of motors traveling through town, so we spent a lot of work with the applicant on making sure the rear elevations and the elevation space in the public streets had a lot of interest in detail. We move to page 993, this is a streetscape image provided by the applicant, giving an example of the master plan and three of those design themes.
Hey, I'm sorry to interrupt. I don't know what it is, but I can barely hear it. It's very choppy.
Okay, I'm hearing, I'm hearing a lot of background noise as well, so I'll try and lean, lean closer to my phone and speak a little bit louder for you.
Perfect, thanks, then, sorry.
That's right, thank you for letting me know. So we move to page 994. This is a massing exhibit. What's interesting about this exhibit is you have the blue color, which is the two-story building element, and then in the orange color, it has a single-story building element. And this is what we worked on quite closely with the applicant to make sure that even though these are two-story homes, there are a lot of elements that soften the appearance and create an interesting street scene for those both living in the subdivision and those driving by the subdivision. If we move to page 995, these are the elevations provided for Master Plan 1. Page 996, the rendering and elevations for Master Plan 2. Moving to page 997, these are the elevations for Master Plan 3. Moving on to page 998, these are renderings provided by the applicant. In the upper left, the image shows a side elevation of one of the homes from one of the internal streets. You can see that the single-story roof element they provided on the home to soften the appearance. The bottom rendering shows the different roof forms and the breaking of the planes the applicant provided with the master plan. And the right elevation shows an extended front porch, again, a single-story element which creates a more interesting street scene for pedestrians and vehicles. Moving on to page 999, again, these are three other renderings. The top rendering is a view from inside the subdivision. The middle rendering is a view from East Bidwell Street, and the bottom rendering is a view from inside the subdivision at the ends of two of the master plans. Moving to page 1,000, as I referenced earlier on in the presentation, the applicant is not developing as many units here as anticipated by the Folsom Plan area specific plans, so they are proposing to move 15 units to two other locations shown in green on the map graphic within the Folsom Plan area. The staff is supportive of this modification and moving of those unused units. Moving to page 1,001, CEQA exemption and streamlining analysis was prepared for this project. The analysis determined that there were no new impacts that were not previously identified with the 2011 EIR. plans, so that they are proposing to move fifteen units to two other locations shown in green on the map graphic within the whole plan area. The staff is supportive of this modification and moving of those unused units. Moving to page one thousand and one, sequel exemption streamlining analysis was prepared for this project. The analysis determined that there were no new impacts that were not previously identified with the two thousand eleven EIR EIS. Moving to page one thousand and two, this is a photograph taken looking north, northwest towards the intersection of East Bidwell Street and Mancini Parkway. Moving to page one thousand and three, this is a view looking north, northeast, and you can see the Lennar subdivision adjacent to the project site, and then further in the distance is the Taylor Morrison subdivision across Mancini Parkway. Moving to slide one thousand and four, the project was reviewed by the Planning Commission early May. There were no members of the public at this meeting. The commission debated a number of issues associated with the project that were wholly supportive of the project as proposed, and voted five zero zero two to recommend approval of this project to the City Council. Moving to page one thousand and five, staff does forward this recommendation from the Planning Commission to the Council for approval. And as always, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have this evening.
Members of the City Council, this is your city manager. I was wondering if I could ask Chief Rodriguez to comment on the conversation about what was called a circle, Cache and Cantor Streets. Chief Rodriguez, could you lead us through that a bit before the council deliberates?
Yes, ma'am, city manager, this is Felipe Rodriguez, Fire Chief. I am aware of the design, specifically on page nine nine zero. You can see it there pretty clearly. Cantor has a, an entrance and an exit point, and in Cache is entering Cantor in a perpendicular fashion at two different points, so therefore it has a separate name.
And they're Cache and Cantor?
Um, yes, I believe that's what's on the design there. So if those end up being the final names, they will be separate because they have separate entrance and exit points.
I'm guessing, well, I'm guessing, yeah, I know, but we have, we have that same situation on Simran Circle. And I'm not aware of any problem that we've ever had. This goes back to my earlier comment. I'm not going to complain about it here, but I want that to be something that we discuss in the future. And I'm guessing this is named for Dr. Cantor, and I don't know the whole Cache thing, maybe Johnny Cash, I have no clue. I'm guessing these came from the historic street name list?
That's correct. Yeah, those are the names, the, the list that's provided by the developer. That's probably how those are provided. And we, we review them, and we discuss whether they conflict with other streets within the city, and also if it's easy for public safety to identify a street. And when they have separate entrance and exit points, we try to have separate names so that there's no confusion for police or fire.
Okay, again, I, I think it makes it even more confusing when they both start with the letter C, but I already made my point earlier.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Or comments? I will say, I'd rather the five point oh. I'm so happy to see a, a master bedroom on the ground floor, so thank you for that. Go ahead, Roger.
Yeah, I was just curious, what fire station, I know in South of fifty, when the, the new ones come online, but at this point, which one will be responding to, I know they all kind of shuffle, but what would be the main fire station responding to this area?
Yes, council member Gaylord, Chief Rodriguez, again, it would be Fire Station thirty-seven at this point. In the future, it'll be Fire Station thirty-four. And then we do have mutual aid with neighboring jurisdictions.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Okay, we will open the public hearing, not unquick, if there's anybody who wants to speak on this item.
There is nobody who wants to speak on this item.
Okay, then we will close.
Staff recommendation.
Close the public hearing, and we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, was there any other discussion? Okay, then please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yeah.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes. And please call the final item.
Your final item this evening is public hearing item number nine, Resolution Number One Zero Four Five Six, a resolution adopting the city manager's fiscal year two thousand twenty, twenty-one operating and capital budgets for the city of Folsom, the successor agency, the Folsom Public Financing Authority, and the Folsom Ranch Public Financing Authority. Presenting this item tonight will be Finance Director Stacy Tumani.
This is Stacy Tumani, Finance Director. Tonight is the public hearing for the fiscal year two thousand twenty, twenty-one operating budget capital improvement plan, and it's your first opportunity for adoption of the budget. The presentation slides were delivered to you this afternoon, so hopefully you have those in front of you. And I will start off with a very brief recap of the last meeting's more comprehensive presentation. And I'll note that there have been no changes to the proposed budget that you received on May twelfth. Then after we go through the budget recap section, we will address a few questions that have been asked since that May twelfth presentation. So we'll start on page two of the slides that you have. And we're just going to revisit how we approached this fiscal year two thousand twenty-one budget that was presented to you at your last meeting. Before the start of the, the COVID nineteen public health emergency, we had our baseline budgeted expenditures over in the left-hand column on this slide of about ninety-three point five million, and a corresponding revenue projection of ninety-three point five million. So we had a balanced budget. After this happened, we now had to take into account a projected seven million dollar reduction in our sales taxes, our transient occupancy taxes, and our Parks and Recreation Program revenues for the fiscal year. We also had three point three million of critical additions to the budget, which are mostly capital in nature, and had another funding source specifically available for this. Because we're assuming at least a five point five million dollar use of the unassigned fund balance as we finish out the nineteen twenty fiscal year, we wanted to take steps to avoid the use of any additional fund balance as we got started here, and to preserve as much of that fund balance as possible. As you'll recall, we balanced the budget in two ways, by reducing expenditures, of which this budget proposes a seven point two million dollar reduction, and the use of one-time revenue sources this year in the amount of three point two million. This gets us to a balanced budget at this point with no use of unassigned fund balance, the eighty-nine point five million. We'll move to page three, the general fund appropriations by department. And year over year, when we compare the budget for fiscal year twenty to the proposed fiscal year twenty-one, down at the bottom, you'll see that we have a flatline budget, pretty much, with just a small reduction of about two point five percent in total. We have some differences in, in the categories individually, but in total, it was just a slight reduction overall. We'll move to page four, which is your revenue summary. This is the past five years, and then the proposed figures for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. We're projecting total revenue, including those from transfers in from other sources, to be at eighty-nine point five million. If we move up to the first blue line, you can compare fiscal year nineteen twenties projected revenue, which is about seventy-nine point two million, to where we think fiscal year twenty twenty-one will come in. And you'll note that it's nearly flat, but will be about a five point four million dollar reduction from fiscal year eighteen and nineteen, fiscal year eighteen nineteen. We'll move forward to slide five, and this is your unassigned general fund balance by year in the orange, and then the unassigned fund balance as a percent of expenditure displayed by the blue line. The proposed unassigned fund balance for fiscal year twenty-one is projected to end the year at about thirteen point two percent with this proposed budget. And as I mentioned many times in the initial presentation, this is very likely to change. We anticipate that there'll be the use of some of this unassigned fund balance during the year, either as revenues come in less than projected as the year goes on, or as you decide to use some of this unassigned fund balance to increase our program delivery and bring back some of those temporarily canceled programs. We go to slide six, you have your appropriations by fund in total for all city funds. The proposed budget includes eighty-nine point five million for the general fund, forty-six point four for enterprise funds, twelve million for special revenue funds, thirteen million for debt service funds, ten point nine million for capital project funds, twenty-two point five for the internal service funds, and eighteen point six for the fiduciary funds, for a total proposed budget of two hundred and thirteen million. So that's my last slide for the recap of the budget. We'll move on to page seven, and this is to begin addressing some of the questions that have come up since your May twelfth presentation. We wanted to give you some background information on each of these topics. The first one we'll go over is the option for adding the battalion chief position, and what impact or trade-offs that would have on the budget. We'll present some information regarding the park improvement impact fees and park dedication Quimby fees regarding their allowable uses, and then some alternative options for the use of the funds, other than what was presented to you at your last meeting. And then we'll have a short section on the aquatic center pool renovation to provide more detail on the state of the pool and the timing of the maintenance. And then we'll be happy to take questions as you move on to your public hearing. We'll go on to page eight. So this is a slide regarding the battalion chief, the first question that we're going to address. And as you know, at this point, there are no excess revenues to be allocated, so we would have to cut expenses in order to add a position. And I'll also mention that in the preliminary budget presentation, we did note that new, no new positions were recommended in any department due to the financial uncertainty that we're facing at this time. The annual cost of a battalion chief is about two hundred and eighty-five thousand for salary and benefits. There are a few options that you could choose in order to fund this position. The first one would be to eliminate a fire prevention officer position, which is currently vacant, plus you'd have to eliminate an additional one to two other positions from other departments. And so you'd have to direct which departments would see that additional reduction. Another option would be to further reduce the budget for the fire department's vehicle purchases, down by the two hundred and eighty-five thousand you would need, and would leave us with about sixty-five thousand. But this would need to be an ongoing cut, and would make it very difficult for the budget to get back up to the one point two million dollars that we need annually in order to sufficiently fund a vehicle replacement program for the fire department. And a third option would be to make additional across-the-board cuts of about two percent for all general fund departments. We already did two point three percent to get to where we are, so that would be about a four point three percent cut across all general fund departments. And that does really cut to the bone for some of those smaller departments. Those are some options for trade-offs that could be made if you decided you want to go ahead and, and add the position to the budget. And that's what we have for that item. Can move forward to slide nine, and at this point, I will turn the conversation over to our Parks and Recreation Director, Lorraine Pajoni. She'll continue this portion of the presentation.
Thank you, Finance Director Tumani, Lorraine Pajoni, Parks and Rec Director for the city of Folsom. We will go to slide nine. The park, uh, park impact fees or the park improvement fees, per, you know, Folsom Municipal Code, Section four dash, four dot ten, the fees shall be expended solely to finance the planning, construction, and development of the facilities. We wanted to clarify that. And then Quimby fees, per FMC sixteen dot three two, the fees shall be used only for the purpose of acquiring necessary land and developing new or rehabilitating existing neighborhood and community park or recreation facility. Go to the next slide. Wanted to highlight a few general plan of municipal code compatibilities or conformities with the neighborhood, or with this project. Policy one point three, each residential neighborhood should be planned with at least one park, recreational, or school within one half mile of each residential unit. That's in the general plan, the Parks and Rec element. And then FMC Section four dot ten, again, specifies that the particular, that the general plan of the city, and in particular, the park and recreation element, requires the city to provide in a timeframe related to the development with an adequate level of Parks and Rec facilities, so to maintain not less than five acres per thousand. We'll go to the next slide. This is a graphic showing some of the areas in Folsom that have either very high, high or moderate need for park space, with the concept of being within about a half mile walking distance to a park. What you have here on the right-hand side, uh, near the Empire, in the Empire Ranch area, the upper circle and the green area in the middle is, that green area is Hazel McFarland, and then the circle is about a half mile radius from that park. And then the second circle is surrounds Nissenon Park, and the half, uh, the half-mile radius is there showing what areas that captures. What also we're showing is there have been six parks planned in Empire Ranch, two have been built, so Hazel McFarland and Nissenon. The other four remaining parks are shown with stars. You've got the Benevento Family Park there on the, below the lower circle. And then you have three other parks, and that would be Park Site Fifty-two, which we call Russell Ranch Park. It's an Ag theme sort of park. It's, uh, with play equipment and, and some parking, that's near Station, Fire Station Thirty-nine. And that is on the edge of the upper right of the circle, the lower circle. There's Park Site Fifty-three, which is on Silverhorn. It's currently the recipient of many mitigation trees, but it'll eventually have a picnic area. And that is off of Silverhorn there, and you'll see that at the edge of the upper circle on the left. And then Park Site Fifty-five is a dog park, and that's at the corner of Bojan and Empire Ranch Road. What this shows on is just the, the colors are just indicating some parking, sorry, some park gap in that area of Empire Ranch. We'll go to the next slide. What we'd like to do now is present some options to, for you to consider. Option, option one, as proposed, so in the current budget, five point four million dollars has been identified as needing to be allocated in this year's budget and the following year's budget in order to arrive at the five point four million dollar cost estimate for Benevento. So the allocation is about four million in impact fees over these two, next, next two fiscal years, supplementally one million dollars in Quimby fees, which are, there is about one million in that category right now. And then an additional four hundred thousand would have to come from supplemental impact fee areas or the general fund. There would be maintenance costs associated with a build-out of a park of this size, about approximately twelve acres, based on the other contract pricing we currently get for our parks. This would probably be about a forty-three thousand dollar addition to our contract. We would also see that there would be some, should be some consideration for the addition of maintenance staff. We, this is what I call kind of a cumulative need. We've, uh, we've taken since two thousand and eight without any additional staff. So that would add approximately ninety thousand annually. Next to the, to the next slide, please. Option two would be a modified Benevento, approximately allocating four point four million, and modifying the park design. That could include perhaps doing the, a parking lot in the play area, which are the upper two tiers of the property, is it, it has some grade differential from the Carpenter Hillside down towards Vista, or another combination of, of another amenity, such as the parking lot and the field below. That would, this, so the allocation of impact fees would be four point four million, approximately. And then one million, if so desired, could be used from the Quimby fees for park renovation needs, as that has been brought up as a important gap to, to fill for us as well. And then there would be appropriate maintenance and staffing costs commensurate with the other cost items I gave to you previously. We'll go to slide, the next slide to option three. Option three would be another modified plan with allocating about one million less to the park itself. So that's, that's reducing what, what we would get, but it, it could potentially be a parking lot and a reduced play area and no field, or perhaps some sort of a field and- So that's reducing what we would get, but it could potentially be a parking lot and a reduced play area and no field, or perhaps some sort of a field and something up above in the upper terraces, and these sort of topics and issues could be easily vetted or would have to be vetted, not only with our Parks and Rec Commission, but also the public, going through the public process. So that could look like three point four million impact fees for the park, and then we do have those three other parks that are not yet developed in Empire Ranch. So Park Site fifty-three, which is about a million dollars, or perhaps Park Site fifty-five, which would be approximately one point three million, and then we could, at your discretion, allocate some of the Quimby fees to park renovation projects, anywhere from seven hundred thousand to a million. And again, the maintenance and staffing costs would be, would have to go along with that. Next slide. This is the last of our options. Option four, modify it simply, since there is a parking lot need in that area, perhaps just do the parking lot only, allocate approximately three point eight millions in impact fees for a combination, and then the remaining of, so six hundred thousand to the parking lot, and then the remaining impact fees could be a combination of the remaining parks, depending upon which ones were sufficient. And then Quimby fees could be allocated to the park renovation projects as well, and again, with some staffing and maintenance costs. And then on to the next slide, just to discuss the, what the Quimby fees could go for. The Parks and Rec Commission entertained a very long list of renovation needs several months ago, and prioritized those based on age, and since it was very difficult to figure out if a tennis court in one park was more important than a trashcan over in Hazel McFarland, they decided to prioritize the projects based on age, and that made it a little bit easier to be able to just describe to anybody kind of our methodology and protocol, since many of the items were twenty-five years or so old. So what could a million dollars buy? It could be asphalt work at Lumbie and Lou Howard, it could replace trashcans and benches at several parks, fix the scoreboard at Lumbie, replace fencing, replace picnic tables, do some resurfacing of basketball courts, replace ballers, doggy stations, barbecues, and drinking fountains at various locations. And there's several different projects identified that reach approximately that million, but those are, those are the categories of that type of work that could be done.
So Lorraine, that means those are cumulative projects for a million dollars? All of that work would be done for that million?
Yeah, that's approximately, what's shown there is about a million, million dollars worth of work. And there's, the way, it's very detailed, but we have probably a page and a half of eleven by seventeen kind of small thoughts, it's probably about sixty different projects, but a bench project in Livermore is considered a project, and a bench project at Hazel McFarland's considered a project, but there's an economy of scale when you're ordering benches, so kind of clustered them into one, one type of project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lorraine, what's the total amount in that list of maintenance projects right now?
Councilmember Gaylord, what type of maintenance projects are you, are you asking about?
No, what's the total amount? If we were to say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna fix everything on that list, what does that amount come to?
That total amount? It's about, it's about six million dollars.
And so, at this point, outside of, and I might be breaking Mayor Akino's rule on speaking before you're done, but I just, I feel it's important that we address kind of one by one. Is there, is there a forecast or plan outside of the age of the project needing to be repaired? Or, you know what I mean, like as far as the planning on fixing what's existing? I think that's kind of the rub here, is for me, is chasing our tails as far as maintenance costs versus new parts coming online, which should keep adding to that list. And so six becomes seven, becomes nine, becomes ten before you know it, and, you know, again, you're chasing your tail, so is there, is there a forecast for that, or?
There is, and that's the formulas that we put together in our spreadsheet of the age, so the strategy is to address these by age, and anything of, any serious kind of public safety matters, those get pulled off the list and are done under a maintenance budget. This is a renovation budget. While the maintenance budget is not huge, it does afford us the opportunity to fix rails on bridges that might have a hole or a gap, or a swing that needs to be replaced. So those don't go un-taken care of, and to the extent that we have to not do, you know, another project for a public safety project, we always, we do the right thing there. But these renovation projects, what we found over the years is it really, you know, a bench being worn out in one neighborhood might irritate somebody a lot, and the bench in another neighborhood may not, and what we can't do, or what we found it was difficult, is kind of hot scotching around, and then there was no real method to an economy of scale and planning. This allows us to plan, this allows us to schedule, whether it's a hundred and twenty-five, twenty thousand that we receive for renovation, or five hundred thousand, we could then plan and address these items in a very systematic, very fair way, while still keeping in mind that anything that deserves our immediate attention would rise to the top.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
If there isn't any other questions on Benevento, I have a few responses to some questions that came up about the Aquatic Center, so next slide, please. And then the next one. A little background, just on the proposal we currently have, is to invest in the renovation on the activity, the activity instructional pool side of the Steve Miklos Aquatic Center. The plaster replacement is five years overdue. Typical plaster lasts about fifteen years. We are now entering our twentieth year of the pool, and as you know, in the fifty-meter renovation, that was, not only included the pool plaster, but also decking, which both the plaster and the decking on this side is at the same degradation and age as we experienced on the fifty-meter side. Algae does become prevalent. In the plaster area, it requires additional maintenance force and some chemical use and time. The pool deck is uneven, just in places where wear and tear has occurred, and chemical, just chemicals have infiltrated into that and eroded the concrete. The activity structure also is part of this proposal, and that has reached its useful life. Timing seems pretty good, since the facility is closed, it might be closed for a little while, so to be able to proceed quickly with a fairly quick turnaround time on the design and quickly get this under construction might make sense. And then, next slide, please. Just a quick comparison of the concrete on the new fifty-meter side of the pool and what the existing activity instructional deck looks like right now. These pictures were just taken in the last week. Next slide. Tile and deck conditions, again, just missing tile, then the activity pool rebar showing through on the concrete around the decking. Next slide. Some rest activity at the pool steps, and also at the activity structure in, at some of the core, core locations there. Those are just some pictures, and next slide, please. Some pictures and descriptions of the expenditures being requested for, in this year's budget. And that concludes my presentation on both Benevento and the Aquatic Center. Okay, thank you. Any more questions for staff on any of those items?
I don't know that I have questions, but maybe comments.
Okay.
So I, you know, if there's a way, my problem with the whole Benevento Park thing, and I know that I agree with Mike on this about maybe delaying it, but we're missing three parks in that, in that neighborhood, and we're in a very, very high, adjacent to a very, very high need area. So of those three parks in that part of Empire Ranch, this one, you know, obviously is probably at least a couple of years behind where it should have been done. So I want to see the park get built. I have no, no, no ability to want to support the option where we just do the parking lot for, which is basically something the school district needs. We need to get that park built, but if there's a way that we can do a million dollars' worth of maintenance on a whole bunch of other parks before we get that built, I would be in favor of that. And I'm gonna move on to my comments about the, about the Aquatic Center. Lorraine, call me, I would love to come down and take a look at that and make some suggestions about the corrosion activity that's been seen. But having been a pool owner myself for a very long time, and gotten a ridiculously long time out of my, the original plaster in my pool, the algae problem is not gonna go away. I explain that pretty much in terms of a, the reason why pools are waterproof, watertight is because of the plaster. Concrete is effectively a hard sponge, so once the plaster has worn away, you're losing water through the concrete, which has the ability to get under it and cause way more problems than you can even see. But the other problem with not having solid plaster on the surface is once you get that algae, you cannot, you can throw all the chemicals in that pool that you want, the algae is not gonna go away. So, you know, I'm in favor of getting that repair work done, certainly on the plaster immediately. I don't know if there's been an issue about the uneven decking, but I think that needs to be done, and I'm gonna go back to what I said at the last council meeting. If there's a way to get the contractor to reduce the overall contract price, because the pool's not in use, they could be in there working twenty-four seven if they wanted to, without having to deal with the normal disruptions that you would do if even a portion of that facility was in operation. So I'd just like to see what the contractor's willing to give back, and I want to see that work proceed. But Lorraine, that is, that kind of corrosion activity is actually my specialty, so I'm happy to come down and give you guys some suggestions about how that should be handled.
Thank you very much, Councilmember.
So are we, this is Roger, are we asking or talking about the battalion chief and the parks all in one, or is there, is it only the parks and Aquatic Center?
Um, let's get with the parks for right now, and then we'll come back to the battalion chiefs, just so we can have Lorraine. Do you have any more questions about the parks?
Yeah, so essentially, I mean, understandably, the, you know, I'll jump from the Aquatic Center back to the parks, but understandably, that, that needs to be done, but a one-point million, a one-point six million dollar expenditure right now, when we have, again, we're talking about, it's just ridiculously long list of things that need to be done at this point, including this, but I just, I have yet to see any type of assessment or report outside of somebody just saying it's five years overdue, which I respect that, but I mean, we're not seeing, you know, how much time in life does this have before it is completely gone, like, where it's unusable at this point. So like, is the slide on page, let me just find it again, page nineteen oh twenty-two, you show the new fifty-meter slide with really smooth, you know, slabs of concrete, and then you show the existing activity deck slide, can that, can that be maintained a little more to ease life out of this, as far as like grinding it down, or, you know, doing other things outside of spending that money and then utilizing that money to address other issues for that Benevento, becomes a little bit easier of a pill to swallow when we're spending that much money, you know what I mean? And partnered with the one point, the one million, if you're looking at almost a three million dollar, you know, attack at the maintenance list, which takes it down to fifty percent, right? Do you get more bang for the same, is there a way to do that as opposed to just go on one shot on the Aquatic Center?
The Aquatic Center, my, my main comment to that would be is that we are woefully overdue in terms of doing this work, and it is a, it's a high revenue maker for us, quite frankly, and it's an asset that we need to preserve to not only, you know, enhance our quality of life in Folsom, but frankly, bring some, bring some dollars in and make sure that we're not shutting it down because of this, this extreme deterioration. We, you know, we're, this isn't a couple of months overdue, this is five years overdue, but, but Lorraine can comment more specifically about kind of where that timeframe came from.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
No, no, I didn't, I didn't hear you start going.
Yeah, I'm just reading off an email here from our consultant, Aquatic Design Group, and he says the deterioration of the pool deck and pool plaster on the activity instructional side of the Steve Miklos Aquatic Center has continued to become increasingly difficult to maintain with increasing health and physical safety concerns. He said the cream coat of the pool plaster in both pools is completely worn off, this creates a porous-type finish that makes it difficult to clean. In terms of the decking, I, I think because of the exposed rebar and the corrosion, I don't think we could do any more finesse to grind down or, or, you know, revive that concrete.
Lorraine, that concrete is gonna have to be removed, the bars are gonna have to get, I don't know what that's epoxy coated rebar, but there is no other option. That concrete's gonna have to be chipped out and fixed.
Understood.
You know, I think, you know, I think if you, you look at the, at the pool, we're talking about the pool, once it goes, it's gonna cost us much more than what we're talking about now. And that's an amenity in this town that creates a million dollars of revenue, which we found out the hard way, hurts when we don't have it. Plus, it's, 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 it's four million people in twenty years have been there. So I, I think.
Well, you're saying, you're saying that because, you're saying that revenue is more important than revenue that, and so, somebody has to have the option to go to the Aquatic Center and pay that fee, but taxpayers pay their fees regardless. So you're talking about thirty-some-odd parks, you know, plugs that have maintenance issues that need to be addressed, that are being bypassed continuously because big projects like this come up, but they're gonna pay their tax dollars regardless. So they don't have a choice to pay it. So at the end of the day, what, all I'm looking for is, and I'm not, I'm not debating whether this needs to be done or not, I'm debating the fact that when or what is the project timeline or the forecast of the issues that need to be addressed, that we need to take care of before we keep adding and adding and adding to the city. So, you know, when the development comes online, we talked about the impact fees in building new parks, so where, where are the keys, and where is the emphasis on addressing current issues right now, right? Like that's my problem, we.
Yeah. Well, Lorraine, correct me, is, can we use impact fees for maintenance? I think we use impact fees for construction, and we use Quimby fees for the maintenance aspect, is that right?
Roughly correct, yes. Impact fees are for building parks. We're allowed to use the Quimby fees for building parks, but also for renovations. They don't use impact fees for renovations.
We're not allowed to use the impact fees for renovations.
Yeah.
We've been through that before.
So that's what I'm saying, like, we're not allowed to use that, so that's an issue, because those build parks, but are, but we're, we're like eighty-twenty, right? Like, we get, there's a lot from the Quimby expenditure than there is the impact fee, which I get, like, like we need to continuously add to our, our, our park allocation and what we're doing, you know, for future growth, but again, we're, we're not taking care of, you know, when I talk to the park commissioners, and my park commissioner especially, and I look at this list, it's, it's huge, right? And then we go by age, and then things, you know, we're, we're trying to catch things and, and emergency, you know, public safety issues, which this could be considered that, but again, it's a one-point-six-million-dollar expenditure when, you know, we're, we're looking at this because it may be, and the city manager's, you know, explanation, it's a revenue generator, but so are our property taxes, which is a way bigger revenue generator than the Aquatic Center. So at some point, someone needs to pay some attention as far as, as what's the game plan for the existing parks, and, and when and where are those dollars gonna be allocated to, to fix those pieces, right? That's all I'm looking for, which I said last week. That's all I'm looking for, which I said last week. I, I just want to see that plan before I say, you know, AOK on 1.6 on, on Aquatic Center. That's, you know, that's some like, that could have a couple of years to live.
I think we can wait with that. You know, you know, you can analyze a problem to depth, and, and while you're analyzing it, it satisfies something that you personally feel and is not represented by the majority, that will create problems that you end up costing us more money because of your insisting that we have all these reports to provide you. When an expert consultant tells you, it's gone, it's gone. I think Kerry Hall...
Where's the, but the problem is, the expert consultants, the expert consultants' reports are not in our report. I'm not seeing where this has zero life expectancy in it. So that's what I asked for. I asked for where, where are the, because my, my pool was that, right? My, my pool, they told me the plaster is bad in it. Um, but then I get another report that said it's got six, seven years left on it, it just needs to be, it needs to be taken care of chemically, right? So there's like, sorry, there's a lot of feedback on the line, but, um...
Right. Do you understand how much chemical is involved in trying to do that? That's, and, and given the size of those facilities, that's a massive amount of chlorine.
Yeah, I'm not disputing that fact, I'm just saying, I...
I, I milked my pool along for a couple of years, and then I had no choice because the algae would not go away. That is the problem that we have right now. That's potential health issue, and the decking is a trip and fall issue, which means a lawsuit to the city.
Yeah, I'm not disputing that. I'm just saying, we're not, we're, I'm not, I, I only speak for myself, but I'm not seeing the, those reports, I'm just hearing those reports. But also, I need to see, I would like to see a game plan for the rest of the issues that the Parks Commission is concerned about, which, which we talked about prior with regards to the list, uh, from the Parks Chair that was presented to the council, which I believe is everyone's referring to on this, uh, this, the $6 million list. So I'm just saying, I want to see that prior to this. Like, I, I would like to see that prior to this, what's the game plan for it, right?
Councilmember, Council...
I'm not debating it needs to be done, I'm just saying, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done, and this is a big ticket item.
Councilmember Gaylord, um, if I could, if I...
I'm going to ask that question.
Councilmember Gaylord, if I could ask Finance Director Stacy Tumani to address approximately how much we do spend as we chip away at these fix-it items every year? I don't want to give any impression that the list just sits there and nothing is repaired. So let's, let's talk about what is spent each year approximately.
Yeah, so in the budget each year, we do allocate about $150,000, and, um, that's what the Parks and Parks Director, Lorraine Pedoni, was mentioning for maintenance. So when things are, like an emergency fix, we do have that, about $150,000 a year, each year in the budget. And it can go towards any of these renovation items.
Yeah, I, I guess, my issue is, I'm not saying, and we can move on because others need to speak, but I'm just saying, I'm not seeing a, a timeframe or a forecasted timeframe of when things will be addressed, right? So if you're saying we spend 150 a year, and we have $6 million to chip off, that's 40 months, um, or no, it's 40 years before this whole, before the list gets addressed, and you can imagine as we're building parks, there's five on this consideration, how much does that add to that list? So it doesn't, it doesn't come further down, right? So I'm just saying, in, in the 1.6 million divided by, uh, yeah, I don't know.
Well, I, I think that's the reason we're having this discussion about whether or not to, to allocate money toward Benevento Park at this time, because we understand that adding to the inventory when we cannot sufficiently, you know, maintain our current parks is problematic. But Lorraine, um, you cited, you know, for the park improvement fees and the park, the Quimby fees, you cited the municipal code. And obviously, the municipal code can be changed just by a vote in the majority of the council. I was under the impression that, that Quimby fees are more constrained because of state law. Is that not correct?
I'm going to actually ask our city attorney, Steve Wong, to weigh in on that if I could, Mayor Aquino.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Stephen Wong, city attorney. You are correct. Our municipal code back in the day did try its best to follow the confines of the state law, but Quimby is a state law provision for mitigation fee, uh, to provide for park, and specifically about new parks and also rehabilitation of existing parks. So the, the expenditure, the authorized expenditure of Quimby fee, mitigation fees collected from various developments, that is casting stone. That is both the state law and also our local law.
Okay, but we can use the Quimby fees to rehabilitate existing parks.
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then, uh, Lorraine, I also have a question. When you talk about, you know, over this, this year and next year, 4 million in impact fees, 1 million in Quimby fees, Empire Ranch is almost built out. So are those, is, is that 5 million coming just from, like, Lakeview Oaks and, and Hillcrest and, you know, the, the few remaining lots in Empire Ranch? Or it, it just seems like that's not possible?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so the, the, the tracking that we're keeping right now, there's several senior, um, uh, senior housing areas, apartments, and that's what we're seeing in this year's budget. And then some, several unbuilt, uh, lots, not a lot, but, um, yet to be built out in, in the city of Folsom on this side of 50. Um, so the projections for next year are about 2 million, and the projections for this year were about 2.6, uh, but conservatively, we were saying probably 4 million total. So there is, um, projections that we track with community development and with finance, how many permits are in the queue, and what, uh, park impact fees would be generated from those. So while we're at the end of the line, um, that is what is out there in terms of being the, the expectation.
Okay. Um, okay. And looking at the, the, the pictures on the pool, I mean, there's no doubt in my mind that, that the renovation needs to happen at the pool. I think it's a, it's a safety issue, um, but it's also, you know, is, is this what we want people to see when they walk into our Aquatic Center? Do we want them to see, you know, broken tiles and, and, uh, rebar rusting through the deck and, you know, crumbling, um, pool deck? I mean, I just don't think that's the look, you know, that, that we want people to see. Uh, and not only is it, is it way overdue, and I think it's a liability issue, but, um, Mike, did you have any questions about parks or swimming pools?
No, not really, but I, I will comment as everybody else has. I, you know, my, working as an architect, I know how insidious water is on structures of all kinds, and swimming pools particularly go from being kind of bad to horrible really fast. So I don't see any problem at all with getting a jump on, you know, or getting the swimming pool fixed. Um, as it relates to Benevento Park, I have never, um, been for modifying the plans for that park necessarily. Um, I just wanted to, you know, make sure that we had a robust discussion about whether the timing was right, and I maintain that the timing is not right, um, for all the reasons that, um, you know, Councilman Gaylord mentioned. So to the extent that we can divert the Quimby fees to getting a, you know, six or seven year jump on that list, um, I think that would be excellent, and it would be philosophically the same as fixing the pool, right? Let's get the fences and the scoreboards and the water fountains and everything spiffed up so that all of our parks are in good condition, um, or as many as we can get in good condition, and then revisit Benevento and the dog park and the others, um, somewhere a little bit down the road, once we have a better footing under us financially for the, you know, entire operation of the city.
Madam Mayor, this is Stephen Wong. If I may also, uh, interject i- into this discussion, if it is the council's desire to use Quimby for rehabilitating existing parks or parks, facilities or park structures, we need to analyze where those Quimby fees were collected because under the law, we're okay to, we're authorized to, to spend Quimby fees to rehabilitate existing neighborhood and community parks or recreation facilities reasonably related to serving the subdivision from which the fees were collected from. There's no absolute in this determination, but there's, it, it's, it's a, it, it, it's a matter of reasonableness. For example, if the fees were collected from a particular subdivision development north of Highway 50, that should not be spent for rehabilitating, rehabilitating an existing park south of 50.
So, so with, with, uh, with that in mind, then, I would suggest that the Quimby fees be redirected to, um, fixing the pool deck, because that is an, that's a park that everyone uses and is a city asset for all neighborhoods, and that the funds that we had thought we were going to spend on the pool, we divert to other parks to freshen them up.
So you don't want to fix the pool? Because we can't redirect the funding to the pool.
No, I want to fix the pool, I'm just...
You're not redirecting those funds? Those Quimby fees are not being redirected?
Okay, so, A, I want to fix... I want to fix the pool, okay?
Okay.
To the extent that we can redirect funding for Benevento in the short term to, in some way, repairing other needs at other parks, I would like to do that.
Okay, that's the million dollars that, that's the million dollars that Lorraine identified in the options that she presented for, um, Benevento. Those are, you're, you're separate...
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's great. And then, and, and then my, you know, further suggestion, recommendation, which has always been the case, is keep Benevento as a planned park, and let's just come back to it when we have, um, a better ability to keep, you know, everything maintained.
If I could just, I, I would just like to make, make the point that, um, and, and that's, that is certainly a strategy, but if you divert the Quimby fees, um, for another purpose, um, likely down the road, the scope of Benevento will be reduced because there just won't be, um, sufficient funding when you divert the Quimby another direction. And that's fine, but I, I just want, um, and, you know, Lorraine, Stacy, Steve, you can correct me if I'm off base here, but, um, you, you very well will end up in a situation where you cannot buy the Benevento that we had talked about buying, you know, that the scope that we had intended today. Is that correct?
Unless you use general fund money later down the road.
Correct, yes. We'd have to dip into our general fund, which, you know, we, we don't really know what the future holds, honestly. But I, I do just want to caution, it, it, it likely leads to a diminished, uh, Benevento, um, unless, you know, unless we're, we're pulling general fund dollars.
And given all the fighting that's happened on Benevento, I don't want to see that happen.
Where do, uh, Mr. Roger, where do impact fees actually sit? And are they interest-bearing accounts where they, where they lie if we're not, uh, using them?
Stacy, could I ask you to address that comment?
This, this is Stacy Tumani. They are in a separate fund, and yes, they are earning interest.
What's the interest rate on them? The annual interest rate, I guess, or whatever?
This year it's been, this year it's been around 2% or a little over.
So are there options on those as well? I, I'm just curious, because, you know, if we were to, to decide to, you know, I agree with every point that, you know, Councilman Kapalowski mentioned, is that, um, you know, he summarized it probably better than I did, but, uh, in general, if that was an option we, we took, uh, is there a way to, to, uh, increase our impact fees by interest and investing and then being able to, you know, address the concern of, of reducing the scope of Benevento through that method by, by, you know, parking it for a little bit?
And if you find an interest rate significantly better than 2%, can you call and tell me what it is and where I can invest my money?
Yeah, there, there's, you know, I, I recognize, yeah. So, so Roger, if I can just jump in on that for one second, and Elaine, with respect to your comment about, you know, we may not get the Benevento that we have planned right now, I, you know, I, I have been willing to take that risk all along because, you know, like, to the Councilman Gaylord's point, um, you know, maybe we can, you know, gain some interest in the short term. However, I know myself that we're not going to keep up with escalation. So I, I know that we may not get the park that we want, but I'm not sure that we can afford the park that's designed. And that, that's why I brought this up in the first place. And if my colleagues don't fully agree with that, I'm okay with it. I just, uh, that's, that's where I, that's where I sit on this one.
I, I understand, Councilmember Kapalowski, and, and, you know, you and I have been talking about this for months, and I completely understand where you are. I just, I just felt the need to make, and, you know, the comment about just being eyes wide open on that, this, that's all I'm saying.
Agreed.
So, and, and just to clarify one more time, you know, we're talking about the million dollars in Quimby fees possibly being redirected to rehab existing parks, but the $4 million in impact fees, all or a portion of that also could be redirected if the council chose, and if we amended the municipal code, correct?
That's a bad precedent, it's that. We haven't done that in 30 years. I don't see no reason to do that at all.
Can you explain that again?
I'm, I'm ignoring that.
Mayor Aquino, can you explain that one more time?
Well, whether it's a good idea or not, I'm, I'm just asking if it's possible, because the four, right now, we're allocating 4 million in impact fees toward Benevento. And my understanding is that impact fees have to go toward the planning, construction, and development of facilities, but that's per the municipal code. The municipal code could be changed to say that it could be go toward, um, maintenance of existing parks or renovation of existing parks, correct?
Madam Mayor, this is Stephen Wong. If I can just clarify that, the, the, the Quimby law in the state law authorizes local jurisdictions to enact their own ordinance to implement Quimby impact fees, which we did in 1991. Without the implementation of the local ordinance, local jurisdictions could not, uh, collect Quimby mitigation fees. So we did that in 1991, but in doing so, we have to conform with what the state law requires, which is to spend the money only for new or rehabilitating existing parks, generally speaking. And then we...
Right, but those are the Quimby fees. I'm talking about park improvement fees. Isn't that something else?
Yes. So under AB 1600, the Mitigation Fee Act, whatever mitigation fee we enacted shall only be spent for the purpose for which they were enacted and collected for. So you can prospectively change what the fees are to be collected and used for, but you cannot change retroactively and reallocate those money elsewhere. If you don't spend the money, then you have to refund the money to the payees, uh, or payers who paid the fees, uh, when they were collected.
Got it.
But, but you can make the change prospectively.
Got it, okay.
And I did just want to remind the council, if, if, Mayor, if at any point you wanted to, if we wanted to back up on the slides, you know, we do have options that, you know, provide for a little of both, including, for example, if you wanted to move ahead with a reduced scope of Benevento, and then also divert funds for, um, you know, these other purposes we're, we're talking about. We, we have presented some options that try to provide some hybrids for you, for your consideration.
Yeah, thank you. I, I personally don't want to, um, bypass the planning commission on this, um, but, um, okay. Any other, any other questions on parks right now or the pool? Otherwise, I want to get the questions on the battalion chief, and then we still need to open this up for public comment.
My only comment would be that that would be bypassing the Parks Commission, not the Planning Commission.
Oh, sorry, I meant to say parks, okay. Um, okay. Uh, Roger, did you have some questions on the battalion chief?
Yeah, um, give me a second, let me go back to the, uh, slide deck, hold on. So on the battalion chief, um, cutting, so there isn't a, currently, the, the position for fire prevention is vacant, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And what's the value of that fire prevention? Um, the actual expense for, for that position?
Jim or Stacy or Chief Rodriguez, do you have the total salary benefits of the vacant fire prevention officer position? Is that, is that your question, Councilmember Gaylord?
Correct, yeah. What's, I was just saying, uh, there, there's a delta here from one to two positions outside of the fire prevention position as well. I'm curious of what those expenses are.
And add to that, Chief Rodriguez...
Probably about $150,000.
And, and Chief Rodriguez, if you could actually explain how that position, the requirements of that position are being met right now? Because I know we're doing that work... Because I know we're doing that work, it's being done by somebody.
Could I ask Ms. Tumani to repeat the amount to answer Councilmember Gaylord's question?
The estimate would be about $150,000 of salary and benefits, and then depending on the cost of the other position, it would bridge that gap. So you'd need one or two. If they were lower-level positions, you'd need two more. If it was a higher-level position, you would just need one additional one.
Okay, and then from a, so $150,000, and then let me ask you the question on the, going back to my initial discussion last year on the PERS payment, what is the exact total of the amount that's saved by paying PERS annually?
At this time, we don't have the newest actuarial report, so we don't have the exact amount. It was down to about $120,000 last year, and we expect that it would be lower.
Okay, and then you expected it to be lower, you said? Because the.
The savings would be lower.
Would make it lower. Why?
The way that they do the calculations of how much you save by prepaying, so it's not in our hands, it's based on how they do the actuarial assumptions.
Okay. What are the, and last question on this, and then I'll get back into my comments for the Battalion Chief, what are the revenue increases, and I say revenue as in, you know, accounts payable increases for the ambulancy increase we had last year? Per base, what are we projecting?
We were projecting, I had that in an earlier slide, for it to come in about $200, let me see here. What slide that was on? About $285,000, I think that was in the quarterly report presentation, about $285,000 over budget, if I can verify. $265,000 is what we're projecting.
$265,000. So last year, the, you know, and we're, again, I'm aware and very, very appreciative and respectful of the situation we're in today, given COVID and, you know, the dramatic changes everyone's making, but my issue is that last year, we discussed in the budget process, I brought up Battalion Chief, in fact, I brought up two, and I brought up PD Resources. So in looking at this, you know, the only, we have like one, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight slide decks, slides on that deck of Benevento Park, but we have one of the Battalion Chiefs. And my issue with that is that between $120,000, $150,000, they have $120 of the, they have $120,000 of the PERS, you have $150,000 of the Fire Prevention position, which doesn't exist today. It's there, but no one gets vacant. And then you have, that's $120,000 just in the budget right now. Then you have $265,000 in increased ambulancy that we collected or we're projected to collecting. For me, as a council member, for a position that's needed like this, I feel like the money is there, and I was told last year to find the money. So it's, I feel like there's a way to make this position happen, and it is absolutely needed. And so I don't know why, you know, we're brought to a slide deck that says we need to cut the Fire Prevention Officer, which doesn't exist today, and then we need to cut one to two positions in other departments to make this happen, when to me, if these funds were directed to public safety as they're from, we have the money for this position. So why can't we have this position?
Roger, I'm going to weigh in a little bit here. You know, we've had several discussions about making a lump sum payment for the unfunded liability to achieve that $125,000 or whatever savings, but there has not been, I haven't heard another council member who supports the idea of taking that savings and using it to fund an ongoing position. I've heard myself and Carrie at the last meeting say, in normal circumstances, we support that lump sum payment to make a savings, but we want the savings to go toward paying down the pension liability. So I don't think there's support for that saying, first of all. Plus, although, you know, Mr. Francis said last year the cash flow wouldn't have been an issue, it is an issue this year, and that's, you know, what, $6 million or something that we're tying up.
Well, no, we're talking about dipping into our fund to basically pay for five-plus million dollars of projects when we could dip into that same fund and pay for this PERS payment upfront and make money back on it. So to me, that argument is irrelevant because we haven't even taken a vote of who's supportive of that, but I can tell you right now, the Battalion Chief position, as we grow, is needed. It's 1,000% needed, more so than a lot of other things that are on the list, but the problem is that I'm having is the delta between the money available versus the money needing to be expensed on this position. So I guess I respect that opinion, but I just don't understand why this isn't something that is just ready to go because, I mean, if you have $265,000 as an increase on ambulancy, where's that going? Is that going directly to the general fund? Is that paying for other things outside of public safety? What is that going towards?
Stacy, do you want to answer that? Because yes, we're expecting a $265,000 increase in ambulance fees. Meanwhile, our general fund revenues are down 5.8 million. So, Stacy, do you want to just add a little bit?
Yeah, the $245,000 over budget just helps us to use a little bit less of our fund balance, so, you know, we have a loss of 5.5 million. If we didn't have that, it would be loss of 5.75 million. So it's not like additional revenue available to be spent. And then in the next year, the budgeted amount for those ambulance fees is part of the balanced budget where we reduce expenditures by, you know, the amount that we needed to get balanced, and so if we were to do that, we have to cut further because the ambulance revenue was used as part of the budget, the total amount.
Okay. Perhaps I could do that. I should have done this in the first place, if this is appropriate. I don't know if Chief Felipe could explain the current position they're in with Battalion Chiefs versus where they need to be as far as growth with the City of Folsom, with, you know, understanding the Battalion Chief role, where we're at currently, and why there is a need, or if there is a need. Maybe I'm just jumping the gun, but for me, you know, when we talk about the game of chess, and we talk about understanding where things need to be for a structure, you have to have your pieces in place to build out. And right now, we don't have that. So that's why I've been fighting for this for almost, you know, two years to get this on here, and I get it, we're in a tough time, but that doesn't mean we take off the table the most important pieces and positions that we need in this city.
Councilmember Gaylord, I just want to. Go ahead, Mayor.
Elaine, I'm not going to put Chief Rodriguez in the position of having to get in the middle of this. The city charter says that the city manager, no, 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 the city charter says that the city manager presents a budget to the council. That's what she has done. She has a process by which she does that, by which she meets with all her department heads. So this is the budget that's before us. What I'd like to do right now is open this up to public comment. Let's see if we have anybody who wants to comment. And then Councilmember Gaylord, go ahead, make a motion.
With all due respect, you cannot sit there as a mayor and expect us to make a decision on finances, given departments that need specific things, and not have them testify as to why they need it. So, I mean, if you want to vote for that.
But no department head is going to tell you they don't need more personnel.
Yeah, Councilmember Gaylord, I do want to, I do want to comment, as I believe I commented at the last meeting, that I don't disagree. I would love to have a Battalion Chief in this budget. I would love to have police officers in this budget. There are, every single one of my department heads on this line has at least one position, if not multiple positions, that they have been waiting in line for a long time. And as I said last time around, and I will repeat again, this is not the budget I wanted to present. This is a budget that is created by the economic crisis coming out of the public health crisis. We, I cannot in good faith recommend adding a new position today because we don't know what the future holds economically, and I don't think that that serves any individual coming onboard at the City of Folsom well. We are very willing as staff, in the end, it's your budget, and, you know, and I will execute it, whatever this council decides, but as we kind of said from the beginning, this is a budget that will be fluid and dynamic, and if we can return to you in three or four months and things are looking much rosier than we expected, you know, then we can start to rebuild parts of this budget, but it's just, today as your city manager representing your department heads, we just don't feel like this is the time to do that responsibly. I don't disagree with anything you're saying. I want that Battalion Chief, I want those police officers, I want a lot of positions for many of my department heads, but it's a tough spot we find ourselves in with these crashing revenues. This is just unprecedented.
Okay, but with all due respect, I literally was just told, we just heard from Lorraine, our Parks Director, as to why the Aquatics Center needed to be replanted, but I can't hear from our Fire Chief as to why they need a Battalion Chief? Is that what is being, is that what I'm being told right now?
Roger, I think we put our department heads in a very difficult position when, I mean, they've been part of this process. They've been involved at meetings with the city manager. There is no department head who's going to say that they don't need or want additional staff. We all know they do, and we all would love to give it to them, but, you know, there's just not enough money.
With all due respect, I'm not asking you. I want to know as a council member what we're putting into a budget that our names are on it, and I need to know what our people need. So I'm saying this, I'll say it one more time. We hear from planning on prospective planning positions on development, right? We hear from the Parks Director on specific things on Benevento Park and the plastering, and I'm not trying to put Felipe or Chief Rodriguez on the, you know, on the block here. I'm just saying, why can't, why are we not hearing directly on what's needed from fire? Because with all due respect, this is what I asked for prior, and if it's being asserted that it's needed by our city manager, why are you, why are you not jumping at this to ask why it's needed? So I guess that's my piece. Why, I don't want to push this down the road. I want to make a strategic investment on this position. I'm asking for support on that, and I'm also asking why, you know, from the position of the people who know, and not, look, our city, our departments are not going to come to the table and just ask little nearly for positions that they don't need. I trust them more than that, and, you know, from the last three years or four years going on in this position, they've never done that outside of understanding what they need that they submit to the lane, right? This was in the budget prior, you know, in discussions, and now it's being pulled, and I don't want it pulled. I want it in there. I think it's needed. So I don't know how to make that argument any more tangible than it is. If I can't hear from them, but I can hear from other department heads, then that's a problem.
Okay, then, you know, Elaine, if you're okay with it, let's ask Chief Rodriguez if he'd rather get rid of his Fire Prevention Officer and have his fire department vehicles down to $65,000 in order to the battalion chief.
Sarah, while he's coming to his phone or the podium, wherever he is, I just want to remind everyone, Roger just said that this was a position that was in the budget prior. It wasn't. It was a request that Roger made, included in the budget, that four of us did not agree with. So I'm happy actually to open the public hearing, get any comments from the public, and then if Roger wants to continue to ask Chief Rodriguez questions during deliberation, let's do it then.
Chris, do we have anybody who's set to speak on this, who wants to speak on this?
You do not have any requests to speak on this item.
Okay. I will officially open the public hearing, just so we do this legally, but it sounds like we do not have anybody who wants to speak, so we will close the public hearing. Chief Rodriguez, would you like to comment on this?
Well, in the interim, I'm going to move the city manager's budget.
As is with Benevento Park in it?
Obviously, we're not building it tomorrow. I would give consideration to spending a portion of the Quimby fees, but again, that's going to create problems down the road with regard to getting that park built. So if anybody wants to chime in.
What is your apprehension, what is your apprehension to listening to Felipe speak before you make that motion? I don't understand it. I'm very curious.
Well, because, Roger, it wasn't included despite your comment a couple of minutes ago. It was not included in the previous budget. You asked the question. You did not have support of your colleagues when you brought it up. Roger, you didn't have support of your colleagues for the Bat Chief position before COVID.
No, we didn't have, I didn't have support of my colleagues because of the budget, not that the physician didn't, that didn't have it, but you guys specifically told me to find the money. There's sufficient funds for this position, and I don't understand why you'd want to move a budget prior to listening to the professional on the matter.
Because I already, we already heard from Chief Rodriguez when this subject came up six months ago or whenever it came up. Yes, it's a nice, and we don't have the money.
I'm sorry to dig my heel on this, but I can't, I can never, I could never imagine passing something without hearing somebody first, so that's just crazy.
I made the motion.
Elaine, would you like the chief to weigh in or?
I'm sorry, Mayor, could you repeat that? We're getting a lot of feedback. It's hard for us to hear each of you.
You know, I'll give the chief or you an opportunity to weigh in if you want.
Chief Rodriguez, if you would like to weigh in on the use of your Fire Prevention Officer position, you can certainly do that, making, you know, keeping in mind that there's still the deficit between, you know, that position and what a Battalion Chief costs. So I know we talked about this earlier. Chief Rodriguez, if you want to weigh in on losing that Fire Prevention Officer vacancy, that's just fine.
Thank you so much, Elaine. This is Felipe Rodriguez, Fire Chief. I know it's a very tough subject for all that have been discussing this, and we have discussed it in the past, discussed it with our city manager very closely. One of the biggest items for us to consider is what's written on the slide itself. I mean, we're in a fiscally difficult time right now because of the COVID situation, and because of that, yes, of course, as has been mentioned multiple times, we are in need of a Battalion Chief. I will not say that we're not. However, right now, because of the uncertainty and the need for many other things, including vehicles, a fire station remodel, and a lot of other things within the department, our Fire Prevention Officer, which we desperately need to continue some of those high-hazard occupancy inspections throughout our city on an annual basis, I would not recommend that we remove the Fire Prevention Officer. If there is time in the future when the uncertainty goes away, or we can look at it in a future quarter, I will closely sit with our city manager and work on this together to make sure that the city manager's budget is carried through with some recommendations from me as your Fire Chief.
Thank you, Chief Rodriguez, and I do, Chief Rodriguez touched on something that I know was described in much more detail during the presentation of the budget at our last meeting, but I do want to emphasize that we have built in and managed to squeeze in an extensive, well, incredibly overdue remodel of Fire Station 38 into this budget. And Chief Rodriguez, I believe that, you know, I don't want to speak for you, but it's my understanding that the department is pretty appreciative that that's built in. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely. As you know, that fire station was built in the mid-1980s, and it is in need of a remodel, some refurbishments, EDA access requirements that are desperately needed. That is one of our highest priorities right now, and I will work closely, as I mentioned, with city manager into the future when we're out of this position that we're currently seeing ourselves in and with no end in sight because of COVID. So that's my position currently at this time, as time comes and we're able to build that Battalion Chief position gladly, but today, I think we need some of those other items, vehicles and the fire station to be remodeled as our priority.
So Elaine, what was the, what's the total being applied to Station 38 right now?
Sorry, Roger, there's really, really weird reverberations. Can you repeat that?
Yeah, sorry. What's the total allocation to Station 38 now in this budget? As I'd known prior, it was like 1.5. What is it today?
Ms. Tumani, could you address that? Because we've had some recent updates.
Yes, there were some estimates that had come in, so it was a little bit higher than that. So we had a project budget of about 1.3 coming from our capital fund and adding on the amount that had been saved up already in.
that had been saved up already in Fund 441, which is our fire capital fund. The total amount of the project is about $3 million, and we're able to fund it based on the different sources that we have set aside.
And we really, thank you, thank you, Ms. Tumani. And we, as Chief Rodriguez knows, we, we worked as a, as a team over the last few weeks dealing with some unexpected cost increases on that project. And, and my bottom line was that was not to be removed from the draft that I was presenting to the council, and it's still built into the budget, that project, despite the cost increases.
Well, I'm busy here. That needs to be, I appreciate that.
I, I believe the renovation of the fire station and the police station were in the, were in the slides in the last council meeting presentation, but...
Right.
It wasn't 3, 3 million, it was the 1. something other.
Yeah, we, we made clear that we would, we would plan to deliver the project, and we, and we still plan to deliver the project. And yes, the police station remodel was also mentioned, and we specifically, you know, tried to take a lot, a whole lot of lemons and make some lemonade. We couldn't, we didn't feel comfortable putting, not at all comfortable actually putting forward a budget that had added new staff members, but we did the best we could to cobble together something meaningful to provide to the community and frankly, to our public safety departments, each of them.
Okay, we have a motion. Carrie, can you please restate it and say specifically what you're proposing as far as the Benevento Family Park, if there's any deviation from what the city manager has presented?
I would be willing to spend at least half of that Quimby fee, $1 million, if not all of it, on other renovations. I prefer to go with half, because if we're going to delay Benevento Park, it may be that we'll find some cost savings or that the Parks Commission and all of the, you know, hundreds of meetings that the public has had about that, maybe they're willing to find some way to deal with less cost into the future. I'd like to see some of the Quimby fees because they're the only money that we can divert to renovation of other facilities spent on that, so.
So, question for you then, Elaine. So, so would the Benevento just wouldn't be built at that time? That money would just stay parked somewhere?
Are, are you talking about the, the Quimby fees, Mayor?
Well, all, so you have $5.4 million in your budget. Carrie's talking about using, let's just say, a half a million of the Quimby fees. So now you've got, what, 4.94? What happens to that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask...
That is, that we're, it can only be used for that.
Right. And Stacy, I'm going to ask Stacy to comment on that because I know that there are, I believe there are some time, time restrictions. You do have to actually, you know, commit the, the funds to a project. So Stacy, could you come on and comment on that timing?
Yes, it needs to be committed within, within five years. So at this point, you would need to commit it to a project, and maybe Steve Wong, City Attorney, can comment on this too, commit it to a project, but you could change that in the future. But it does need to be committed.
Correct. It's usually five years you have to commit, and then you progressively save up the money so that you can actually spend it as collected for the purpose for which those fees are collected.
So you work toward it over time? And I, I understand there's some...
And as Bernie explained earlier, money needs to be spent on that park. We can't just eliminate that park and spend money elsewhere.
But I'm just trying to clarify in terms of your motion, if it's seconded and we adopt this budget as, as you've moved, that means we're going forward with Benevento Park in some fashion, right now.
And if I could ask if, if maybe, if Councilmember Howell, if, if we could bring up the slides with the options, if, 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 Mayor, maybe that's where we could return to, if there's one of those options that is part of this motion for Benevento Park, or if it's some variation, one of those options, maybe, Mayor, if we could, that might be a reasonable place to, to go with this motion.
Okay, so I think that would be, it's the, the last slide, and where it explains what the $1 million could accomplish, it would be use half a million. So I don't know which option that brings us back to, because it's not one of the options of life.
I think it's option two, isn't it? Except for you're saying 500,000 instead of 1 million.
Um, yeah, I think I am.
Could, could I make a friendly amendment to your motion?
Of course you can.
That, that being that further developments of Benevento Park would be suspended for the next budget year unless that somehow gets us outside of the five years.
Well, I would, I would suspend it probably for six months. Because I have a feeling we're going to be looking at a different universe within a few months. So I'd want to have that come back at the next, you know, the next quarterly review of the budget. Would that work for you, Mike?
Well, I mean, there's, there's no reason why we couldn't modify our, our instructions at any point. I'm just suggesting that at this point, just table Benevento for a year. Whether we divert some of the funds or not, I'm happy to, you know, you know, vote on that. But my intention was simply just to stop digging holes.
I can, I can live with, with that suggestion that we table Benevento for the very short term and spend a half a million of that Quimby fee, which is the only thing we can spend, on doing some of the updates to the other parks.
And Carrie, I would second your motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, spending it on, on park renovation per the direction of the Parks Commission?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yeah.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yeah.
Anna Kino?
Yes. Okay, moving on to the manager report.
Good evening, everyone. As, as most of you know, Sacramento County released a new public health order just this last Friday before the Memorial Day weekend that allowed certain businesses to reopen. And most exciting among those was that it allowed indoor and outdoor sit-down dining at restaurants, and it allowed stores to have shoppers inside and shopping malls to reopen. And then effective at 11:59 tonight, the order was revised to also allow salons and barber shops, hair salons and barber shops to reopen, as well as religious services at 20% of a, of a building's capacity, up to 100 people within specific guidelines. This is all exciting news and definitely moving in the right direction, and we ask you to shop local whenever possible. Our businesses need you now more than ever. The city of Folsom is distributing free face coverings to assist Folsom businesses preparing to reopen. Businesses can pick up face coverings as supplies last from the Folsom Public Library at 411 Stafford Street by appointment only. Businesses must be in eligible sectors, complete a registration form, and schedule a pickup time. I'm very pleased to share that since Saturday morning, when we placed all 80,000 masks we received in a room over at the library, we have coordinated close to 110 pickups to date and given out 15,000 face coverings so far to businesses. Earlier today, curbside library pickup service began, and so one item pickup and drop-off services will be available at the library Tuesday through Saturday by appointment only. Outdoor book return boxes remain closed, and precautions are being taken for the safety of our staff and our patrons. All items available for checkout, checkout have not been used by another patron for a minimum of three, three days. For more information or to place items on hold, visit the library's website. The Folsom Fire Department's Life Jacket Loner Program provides Folsom residents with free daily and weekend rental of life jackets for all ages. The life jackets are available at Folsom Fire Station 35, and borrowers must provide a valid driver's license. For more information, you can call 916-461-6300. The skate and bike parks are now open from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. daily. Both facilities are located at Cummings Family Park at the intersection of Creekside Drive and Oak Avenue Parkway. All users must maintain at least six feet social distancing from any other person at all times, whether you're on a bike, a skateboard, scooter, skates, or on foot. You can call 916-817-2767 for recorded information about daily operating conditions and hours. And then finally, I ask that everyone please be aware of scams and fraud targeting senior citizens right now. Very unfortunately, criminals often use an emergency like the COVID-19 pandemic or a national effort like the 2020 census to prey on senior citizens. The city of Folsom and Folsom Police Department would like to remind you to be on the lookout for scammers. Scammers will try to impersonate a government agency, a utility company, or a business in the hopes of getting you to pay them money or share personal information. We are aware of a recent scam where they're mentioning that, or they're saying on the call that they are calling from the mayor's office. Please check in on your senior loved ones and help them avoid a scam, and more tips are available on the city of Folsom website. And that's all I have, Mayor, this evening.
Okay, Councilmember Gaylord?
No, I'm good. Good night.
Councilmember Kozlowski?
Um, just, just one quick thing. Not much happened at our STACOG meeting. We spent most of the time talking about future plans, but not resolving anything in particular. And then on Saturday, I volunteered to help with the dispersment of masks to businesses here in Folsom, and turned out that I wasn't really needed for that. And I got a, instead, a fantastic download in person from our library director about all the things they're doing to hopefully get the library back opened or be prepared when it can reopen. And I just want to give kudos to our library director and staff for doing a great job of thinking through the challenges of making our library a nice, healthy and safe environment in this weird world we're in. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Howell.
Just to add on to the library stuff, I don't know how many of our residents know about OverDrive or any of the online library services that you can utilize on your phone, your laptop, your tablet, whatever. I actually subscribe to OverDrive, and it's an excellent, excellent way, as long as you have a City of Folsom library card, to download books. So for those that are, that are starved for reading materials, if you haven't downloaded that app, you should do that. It's free. You don't have to pay for anything. You don't get the books necessarily when you want them, but if, if it's not available because there's too many internet versions checked out, they'll send you an email to notify you when it is available. And I strongly encourage people to do that until we can get the library open in a health and safety manner. There's still people driving crazy in Folsom because there is no traffic. Please slow down. The speed limit applies to you no matter what. Stop times apply to you no matter what. Red lights apply to you no matter what. We've had some horrific accidents in the last couple of months, and please drive carefully. And I just want to thank all of the hard work that our staff, the city of staff, Folsom city staff, has done over the last couple of months. It has been, I know in Elaine's case, and I'm sure many others, are Herculean effort, and they have actually probably put in twice as many hours as they would normally put in. And I just want to thank all of you for all of the extremely hard work you've done. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Sheldon?
About the only thing I'm going to comment on, I guess the fireworks as they go for the Fourth of July, from the 28th of June through the Fourth of July. Yeah, I personally won't be capable or physically able to participate this year for the first time in about 19 years. But it's going to be a challenge for everybody, and there's a lot of unknowns. So I say, as we march down that road to that date, everybody be kind to everybody because it's going to take that to get through it. It's just my observation. I wish I could participate more, but I'm not capable. Other than that, I wish everybody, I hope everybody had a good Memorial Day and a holiday. And all I say is everybody be careful and watch yourself. That's it.
Thank you, Ernie. And I just want to congratulate all the graduates, Folsom Lake High School, Folsom High School, Vista Delago, and Folsom Lake College. So, everybody, we are adjourned. Thank you.